This conference will now be recorded.
Hello?
Hi.
I'm back.
Hi.
Hi.
Colleen, are you on? Mike, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, I can, Steph.
Okay. Colleen, are you there? No, no, Colleen.
I just texted her.
Okay.
I don't think my mic's working. I'm going to call in.
Oh, you're working now.
I got you now.
Okay, okay. Everyone here? Is Bob here?
All there.
Okay. Okay, by the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Contra Hockenborough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Steph, if you would like to do roll call.
Councilmember Totino?
Present.
Councilmember Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Councilmember Barton? Anita? I see you. Okay, Councilmember Sturrock? Bob?
Bob?
I'm here.
Okay. Vice President Sokolowski?
Here.
President Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Aronson?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled public work session. At this time, please mute your audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comment section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@contraockenpa.gov. A member of the Borough Administration will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. Thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. Prior to the work session this evening, council held an executive session on legal matters. The first item on the agenda is land use, public hearings, and ordinances. The first is conditional use hearing for 400 East Elm Street, Corson Street Acquisition LP applicant. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, President Leonard. Ed, if we could go on the record, please. This is the scheduled date and time for the hearing on the conditional use application of Corson Street Acquisition LP. Application number Z-2020-15 for a conditional use pursuant to zoning ordinance section 27-1603.4 to permit a multifamily residential development in the SP3 district on the property located at 400 West Elm Street. I do see that Mr. Colagreco is here. Before we get into the applicant's testimony, there are a few borough exhibits I'd like to introduce. Exhibit B1 is the proof of publication. This matter was advertised on December 11th, 2020, and December 23rd, 2020 in the Times Herald. Exhibit B2 are two entries of appearance that were received. The first for Dryden, D-R-Y-D-E-N Court Development LLC for the property of 450 Colea Lane. And number two were David Bissell, 405 West Elm Street. Exhibit B3 is an email dated January 6, 2021, from Rob Lewis, counsel for Dryden Court, formally withdrawing the request for party status of Dryden Court. Exhibit B4 is a zoning determination from a zoning officer dated December 3, 2020. Exhibit B5 is the report of the Contra Hockenborough Planning Commission recommending approval of the application subject to certain conditions, and those conditions specifically related to the underlying requirements of the conditional use. Exhibit B6 is the report of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, also recommending approval. The applicant provided the borough with an exhibit packet, which I know Lou will walk you through. That's exhibits A1 through A24. Before we turn it over to the applicant, we have to work through party status. So as I noted, there were two entries of appearances received. One party withdrew their request for party status. Is Mr. Bissell on the line? Is anyone representing Mr. Bissell on the line? With that, we'll note that Mr. Bissell has not appeared this evening, nor has anyone on his behalf. Lou, we'll see he shows up, but for the time being, I don't have to ask you if you have any objections. So let's walk through, just for the rest of the public, what party status actually means. So for the members of the public, no matter what, you'll be given an opportunity to offer comment on the application at the end of the hearing. To become a party, you would so request now, and the reason that you would become a party is if you wish to participate in the hearing by asking the applicant's witnesses questions, by offering your own witnesses. It also gives you an opportunity to file an appeal with the court of common, please, if you're unhappy with the decision. With that, is there anyone from the general public that wishes to participate in this hearing as a party? Again, you will have an opportunity to offer public comment regardless. Let the record reflect that no one has indicated a desire to be a party. With that, Lou, if you could, please identify your witnesses. We can have Ed swear everyone in at the same time, and then you can get started. Lou, you're muted there.
Am I muted now?
No, you're good. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
Good evening, and thank you, Mike. Lou Colagreco, on behalf of Corson Street Acquisition Limited Partnership, the applicant here this evening. I will have four witnesses to present to council in this conditional use hearing. And I understand, Mike, you're going to have them all sworn at the same time. So Bob Dwyer, William Reardon, Chris Williams, and Patrick Stewart.
Okay, would you each raise your right hand? You sound like you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a piece of the subject property before the borough tonight for consideration. You've seen it through a myriad of prior applications and prior approvals, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. Suffice it to say, it's approximately 10 acres. I'm sure everyone knows where it is. And it is, two of those acres are situated actually in an abutting township, and our witnesses will go through that in more detail when they testify. But the application is for conditional use approval for a multifamily residence to be situated on the property. It was previously approved for multifamily residences many, many years ago. That was never constructed, obviously. Then it was approved twice for office use, and that was never constructed, obviously. So now we're back to the multifamily conditional use application before the board this evening. I'm not going to spend a lot of lawyer time here going through a lot of this. My witnesses will do that. So I think the best way to do this is to get started with the testimony, and I'd ask that Bob Dwyer, well, you've already been sworn, Bob, so I guess I can start asking you questions. Can you identify yourself for the record and your role with this application?
Yes, thanks, Lou. Thank you to the Borough Council. My name is Robert Dwyer, Bob Dwyer. I live at 721 Old State Road in Berwyn, and I'm the representative for Corson Street. I've been working for Corson Street for over 20 years. Of course, the street's a limited partner under a company called Equus Capital Partners. I handle most of their land development applications, and I've been involved in this project for about six years.
And you are authorized to make representations on behalf of the applicant this evening and to bind the applicant through your testimony?
I am.
I premarked and sent to the borough previously all of the exhibits that we're going to be using this evening. I have collectively marked as Exhibit A3, three deeds. Is it through these deeds that Corson Street Acquisition, and I'm going to use that as the abbreviated name of the applicant, is it through these deeds that Corson Street establishes legal ownership to the property?
Yes.
Okay. Now, this project isn't the first, you heard my little brief summary in the beginning, but this is not the first application for development for this property, at least that you've been associated with, is it?
That's correct. It started back in 2013 for the 352-unit residential development that secured conditional use approval from Borough Council. And in fact, there's an Exhibit A4 that, if Brittany can scroll to it, I'll show you a picture of that. That was the application that was approved back in 2013, very similar to the project today, but much, much different in appearance. As far as density, height, et cetera, it's similar.
And Exhibit A5 is actually council's decision approving that application way back when, correct?
That's correct.
Now, after the multifamily project was approved by the borough in August of 2013, there was a change in market, change in demand, and Corson Street decided to go the office route. You were involved with that as well, were you not?
Yes, that's correct.
And I think we have Exhibit A6 of what the first office application was, correct?
Yeah, this is a 324,000-square-foot building, 110 feet in height. And this secured both Borough Council final approval as well as a variance from the zoning hearing board for building bulk.
Okay, and that plan that we're looking at right now, that rendering Exhibit A6, was subsequently replaced by another office building approval, which I think we've marked as Exhibit A7. At least the rendering of that approval, we've marked as Exhibit A7. There you go.
Yes, this is a 400,000-square-foot office, 135 feet in height. This was a result of Mercer's Bergen entering the market, and we were one of the primary candidates for building their headquarters on this site. Ultimately, it went to Keystone, but this building was formally approved by the borough. All the approvals were in place, PNDAT, NPDS, theme, all the approvals necessary to break ground. And this also needed two height bonuses and the zoning hearing board relief as well, which was secured.
You mentioned earlier, and I'm going to go back to that because it is relevant to the application that's before the board this evening. Both office building plans that we were looking at just previously did receive relief from the zoning board for what I'll call a bulk dimensional requirement. There's probably a better way to describe that. And since you're a planner, I'll let you describe it. But in a sense, the building massing or the linear face of the building, as I understand it, was not permitted to be longer than 300 feet. Did I bastardize that, or is that close to being?
That's, that's a good description. It's, the building you see on the screen right now was 574 feet in length from end to end. And we were required to get relief for that building. We actually secured the relief on the prior application for a very, for the identical footprint, 574 feet. Hearing board approved it, and ultimately, that plan was approved by Borough Council as well.
And in fact, we'll come back to this in a little bit. The apartment building or the multifamily building that's before council tonight has just recently received similar zoning relief from the Contra Hocken zoning board to exceed that 300-foot dimension. Is that not correct?
That's correct. We were able to obviously reduce the bulk, but we still need some relief due to some of the encroachments and constraints on the site. So we secured approval for 392-foot building bulk for the, for the new project that we're proposing now.
Okay, well, let's go to the new project. That's enough of the site history. Let's punch up Exhibit A10 if we can. I think that's the illustrative site plan. And Bob, I'm going to let you free-flow here. Why don't you describe what council is looking at?
Okay, well, this, the West Elm Street is at the top of the page, and the river is obviously to the bottom of the page. To the right is the Plymouth Creek and the Grand Condivinium Complex. The entrances that are proposed here are identical to what was submitted and approved in prior applications. In fact, we have the PNDAT permits already in hand for this, but the building's a 352-unit, 134-foot high structure with a two-level parking garage, surface parking to meet and exceed the ordinance. In addition to this application, we also purchased the property at 432 West Elm. It's a single-story home, and we intend, under this application, to remove that home and install public parking for the residents. It'll be a 20-space parking lot with easy access in close proximity to, to the homes, and also it can serve as an access point for the trail and trail parking as well. The, the plan will include all the amenities and open space requirements. We've got, and we'll talk about this later, proposals for various pocket parks around the property. And we, you'll learn from our engineer, we, we meet and exceed the open space requirements. We meet all the other requirements as well. And I think that's probably the best summary. If there's any other questions, we can go through them, but that's, that's a, that's a brief summary of the proposal.
So the access points to the facility, the access points to the development are identical to those previously approved by council and previously approved by PNDAT, correct?
Yes, and I guess I should mention that the trail, the Schuylkill River trail that goes through the site today, much like it was provided before, we will relocate that down along, closer to the river. And it's, we're going to have two access points into the trail system, and we have an exhibit that'll, we get into the details on that in a little bit, but the trail relocation will be the very first thing we do because under no circumstances will we have that trail broken up. It'll be installed new before we break ground on the, on the building.
I'm going to ask you to speak to the next exhibit, Exhibit A11, because the site's not an easy one to develop. I mean, it's got its fair share of both natural and man-made constraints, which has made this somewhat challenging. All of the applications have faced this challenge on this property. But why don't you briefly describe for council what some of the physical limitations were that we've had to deal with in planning this development?
Sure. Well, in blue is the floodplain, of course, and we've gotten for some minor encroachments in that. And Bill Reardon, the engineer, will go through that in more detail. More importantly, the catenary lines in yellow were a significant constraint that has been involved in this property from the start. The, we had to deal with Amtrak and PICO, and a lot of times the rules will change relative to the setback from the wires and the poles. It's gotten a little bit more restrictive since the last time we submitted a plan, so the, the building area has actually been more constrained. On top of that, we have a major aqua easement that comes from Contra Hocken across the, under the river into, or I'm sorry, from West Contra Hocken into Contra Hocken through the river and goes through our site. On the right there, you can see it's marked aqua line easement. We also have steep slopes, some natural woodlands and setbacks, et cetera, that all add to the constraint. So the building area is shown in gray, and that's basically how and where all the development has, has occurred. And as far as the prior approvals, we've pretty much been constrained to that location.
So let's take a look at Exhibit A12, which are the renderings of the new building, what it would look like. We can punch that up, and I'm going to ask you to speak to that.
This, again, this is a 352-unit, 13-story, 135-foot building. It's, it's, it's made of steel and brick, glass, a lot of glass, and metal panels. It's, it's got significant amenities proposed to be installed with it, all the things you can imagine. Pools, gyms, workout locations, work, work-at-home locations, mailrooms, lounges, et cetera. It's, of course, we're still looking for the approval before we get into the final designs on this building, but the building was designed to try to capture some of the, the history of the, of the borough. That's the rear elevation from the train station area.
If we could take a step back, Bob, there's a couple of questions I missed, that if we could go back to Exhibit A11, which is the site constraints plan. I want to make sure the council understands specifically the floodplain issue on this. Isn't it correct that none of the multifamily units will be situated within the regulated floodplain?
That's, that's correct. Everything's above it. It's, it's, it's high and dry, and the only encroachments are, as Ken built, we'll get into it, but there's some, some retaining walls and some driveways that get us back to the rear end of the site that have some encroachments. But these, these encroachments are actually less than what were provided for, proposed before, as, again, the engineer will talk to that shortly.
Great. If we could go back to Exhibit A12, the renderings. That, that top rendering speaks to this issue perfectly, the building bulk issue and the relief that was recently granted by the zoning board for, to exceed that 300-foot linear dimension. Can you, using this exhibit, explain the relief that was sought before the zoning board and that was received from the zoning board?
Yeah, the, the interpretation for the building bulk is really an out-to-out dimension, so the furthest two points of the building. So if you could look at the furthest right corner of the building, the furthest left corner of the building, that's the dimension which was considered the building bulk, and that's 392 feet. The 300-foot dimension would be met on any of the sides clearly, but they would not meet the out-to-out. So 392 is from the furthest right to the furthest left points of the building.
Much, much less building bulk in that regard than the previously approved office building, correct?
Yes, that was 574.
Yeah, and we've marked that zoning board approval as Exhibit A13. You spoke briefly about height bonuses, and the SPC, SP3 district does allow for building height bonuses. The building height limitation in this district, as I understand it, is 85 feet, but you can obviously increase that building height by securing certain bonuses. Can you explain to the board or kick to council what the applicant is putting forth? And maybe we'll come back to this later, but just give an overview of the two height bonuses that we would be seeking to get to the 135-foot height allowance.
Sure, much like the prior application, we needed to, we need two height bonuses for this one. In the prior applications, we had proposed various things which council was considering, none of which was locked in. But we did lock in at that time a contribution that would be put forth for benefits in and around the river, the trail, as called for in the ordinance. At one point, we talked about putting a comfort station in. You may recall, that was on the first application. The second application involved some, some park areas that we are now proposing on this current application, as well as a potential dog park. All those things are things that we will certainly consider and have some ideas on, which we'll put forth shortly. And also, if we're successful in getting conditional use approval, we'll work with the borough during the land development process to finalize those, those ideas.
I'm going to recall Mr. Dwyer later to elaborate more on some of the amenities of the plan. I, I wanted our civil engineer to really get into some of the nitty-gritty first, so, Mike, if it's okay with you, I'll bring Bob back shortly to elaborate on the trails and the open space and the park, potential, you know, park area. But I didn't want to get into too much detail right now on that until our civil engineer offers a little testimony.
Lou, that's mine, and for council, you can ask Bob any questions you have for him when he's recalled at that time, just to try to keep the hearing organized. So Lou, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And Exhibit A14, I believe, is that prior borough approval I see on the screen in front of me here. We've marked that approval as Exhibit A14. Really only one more question for Mr. Dwyer, and it has to do with Exhibit A15. Although not required by ordinance, you did participate in the preparation of this fiscal impact summary. And why don't you briefly summarize for council what your findings were in this regard?
We hired a planner that specializes in fiscal impact reports. He was unable to come tonight, but this, again, this is not a required report, but it does show that the net fiscal benefit, net every year from here on out to the school district in the, in the borough would be $700,000 roughly. 30,000 or a little over 30,000 would be for the borough, and then obviously, the vast majority would be 670,000 would be for the Colonial School District. There, this is all based on the value of the building, school age, children, those types of things, but it's a, it's a net benefit. It won't be a drain on the, on the borough's coffers.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Dwyer at this time.
Very good, Lou. Call Bill, please.
Okay, Bill Reardon?
Hello, Lou.
You've already been sworn.
I haven't.
Yes, you have. Name, address, and occupation for the record, please.
Bill Reardon, R-E-A-R-D-E-N. Address is 1600 Manor Drive, Suite 200 in Shalfon, Pennsylvania. Principal at Bowler, have been there for over 22 years, of which 15 have been as a practicing licensed engineer in the state of Pennsylvania.
And you've been accepted by the borough as an expert in civil engineering in prior proceedings, have you not?
I have, yes.
Mike, I would offer Bill as a, as an expert in civil engineering.
Lou, as you know, we had accepted him previously and worked with him for many years now. I would recommend to council that he be accepted as an expert in civil engineering, and Colleen, all you need to do is, is agree with me or not.
Yes, I agree with you, Mike. Thank you.
Very good. He's so accepted, Lou. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Exhibit A16, if we can, which is the conditional use plan, Sheet 1. Bill, you, you prepared this plan, did you not?
I did, yes.
And I'm not going to pretend to be able to read that area in bulk chart that's on this plan, but I did read it previously. If I were to walk through that chart, would it show compliance with the SP3 area bulk requirements for development of a multifamily project in the SP3 district?
Yes, it would. It would show compliance, with the exception, of course, with the before-mentioned zoning relief that we were granted by the zoning hearing board last month.
Okay. I don't, let's go back to the exhibit. What was the exhibit that showed the site constraints? Because I did want to elaborate. Pardon?
A11.
Using Exhibit A11, could you briefly describe for council what improvements will actually be in the floodplain?
Yes, so the floodplain is the area that is shown in blue. It is a floodplain associated with the Schuylkill River as well as Plymouth Creek. The Plymouth Creek floodplain The Plymouth Creek floodplain, uh, is on the, generally, the, the eastern side of the property. Uh, the Schuylkill floodplain is associated with the western and southern edges of the property. Uh, the, uh, improvements, um, that we are proposing within the floodplain are primarily the relocation of the Schuylkill River Trail. Uh, the trail currently essentially runs under the yellow area where the catenary lines are now. Uh, as part of this development, it's being relocated, uh, to the southern edge. Uh, so a portion of that will be in the floodplain, as well as a, the rear circulation drive aisle that gets you to the back of the building, as well as the lower entrance to the parking garage. Uh, and it also provides access, uh, to the borough's, uh, Plymouth Creek, uh, maintenance area, uh, that is on the eastern side of the property.
In fact, if we, if we go to Exhibit A seventeen, that would probably show up graphically, uh, better than this plan shows it. There we go.
Correct.
Okay.
So the, the area that, that I was referring to, that was the floodplain, that is the area of encroachment, is shown in the, the cyan-blue hatch on this plan, and as you can see, uh, the, neither the building nor the parking garage are in that area. It's only a few, uh, parking spaces, a portion of the rear drive aisle, uh, and then some portions of the Schuylkill River Trail, uh, that runs along the southern boundary.
Uh, specifically regarding the Plymouth Creek maintenance area, uh, there won't be any fill placed in the floodplain or floodway of the Plymouth Creek, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and you did prepare the floodplain analysis narrative that I've marked as Exhibit A eighteen, did you not?
We did, yes.
I'm not going to ask you to go through that entire report, uh, but can you describe for council approximately how much of the floodplain is being disturbed by this, uh, application in totality?
Uh, in totality, on this application is point four eight acres, uh, which is actually, uh, less than the disturbance associated with, uh, the previous, um, applications and approvals.
The floodplain conservation district requires that when the disturbance is within an area, uh, without floodway, that the increase in base flood elevation must not be more than one foot at any point in order for the zoning board to have considered granting the variance, is that correct?
That's correct.
And they did grant that variance, correct?
They did, yes.
And so you satisfied that criteria?
Correct. Uh, the improvements that we're proposing had, uh, negligible impact, uh, to the base flood elevation.
Okay, you are familiar with the conditional use requirements of the borough as pertains to multifamily development in the S P three district, are you not?
I am, yes.
And would it, if I were to take you through each and every one of those criteria, would your testimony be that this development does comply with the requirement as set forth in the ordinance?
It does, yes.
Can we go to Exhibit A sixteen? Maybe blow that up a little bit. Using that exhibit, can you briefly describe for council the method of interior circulation, how I get into the site, what I do once I'm in the site, and how I leave the site?
So there are, there are two, um, access points, uh, to the property. Uh, one is opposite Corson Street, that's a full movement, uh, driveway. Uh, you can enter and exit, uh, at that location. Um, you can also enter and exit farther east, uh, to the prop, uh, into the property closer to, uh, Plymouth Creek. Uh, but you can only enter via a right-in turn, you cannot make a left into that driveway, although you can exit both left and right. Once inside the property, uh, those two driveways are interconnected, uh, by a drive aisle that goes in front of the building. There's a drop-off location, uh, immediately adjacent to the front of the building, a few parking spaces there. Uh, and then those, um, drive aisles are then interconnected to all the surface parking areas that are to the west, uh, and south and east of the building. Uh, and then there's also driveway connections from those internal drive aisles to the upper level, as well as the lower level of the parking garage.
Excuse me for just a second. Does the, uh, I, I, again, I apologize, I just can't read it, but does the legend on the plan, uh, denote how many parking spaces are being provided on the property for the proposed use?
Uh, it, it, the table does. Um, there are a total of four hundred and thirty-nine parking spaces being provided. A hundred and eighty-nine of those are located within the parking structure. The balance, two hundred and fifty, are located in surface parking areas, uh, spread throughout the development, and those parking spaces are exclusive of the twenty parking spaces that have been set aside for public use, either in the separate parking area located along West Elm, uh, as well as a few spaces located on the western end, uh, near the trailhead.
I don't have any further questions for, uh, Bill Reardon. I'd like to recall Bob Dwyer, uh, to elaborate more on our amenities plan of, at this time, if that's okay.
Lou, if we could, um, to the extent you do not intend to recall Bill, I'd like to ask member of councils if they, if they have any question for, um, Mr. Reardon at this time.
Anyone from council have a question?
No.
No.
Sounds good. Obviously, to the extent something comes up, Lou, um, we'll ask Bill to be recalled, but please move on with Bob.
Thank you. Bob, you're up again. Let's go to Exhibit A twenty, which we call the Trail Access Plan. Bob, I'm going to ask you to speak to this plan and describe, uh, what we're attempting to show through this, uh, this rendering.
Sure. Of course, the township comprehensive plan, the river, riverfront studies, and your ordinance all require, obligate, um, a development like this to provide access to the riverfront and the trails, um, and to improve upon the, uh, the riverfront and trail system and the open space and recreation areas in, in and around the buildings. Uh, so th- this plan is intended first to show you, uh, how the trail lays out, um, uh, into the future. There'll be, we have two, uh, new trailheads proposed. One would be, uh, right adjacent to that parking, uh, lot that we're building on the west, uh, side of the site, where that house is existing today. Um, that, that, uh, you can park there, and you can walk, uh, down some steps or down a path and into, um, a trailhead that will feed you, um, heading towards Valley Forge Park, and eventually, uh, uh, sweep you back into, uh, the new trail that will then go, uh, up and down the river to whatever location you want to, uh, uh, go at that point. We also have, uh, Trailhead East, which is a- adjacent to the, uh, the old, uh, uh, railroad bridge, which is on the east side of our site. Uh, at that location, you'll be able to, uh, to walk from the sidewalk system, uh, across the bridge and down to the count, uh, Cross County Trail or, uh, to the Schuylkill River Trail, uh, heading towards, uh, Philadelphia. And of course, that will, will bring you down to the, uh, to the entire, uh, trail system, which could take you up and down the river at your leisure. Um, we also have an intermediate, uh, location, um, right at the entrance to our site, where you can walk onto the site and then down a path system, uh, and go to the building or to trailheads, um, to get to the, to, to get to the SRT or the, the, uh, Cross County Trail.
On, on my screen, Bob, it's on the left-hand side of my screen, there's a, a, a Trailhead Park that's called out. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, uh, and we'll get into some more details on the file, uh, the following exhibits, but, uh, that, that Trailhead Park is not counted in any of those calculations. It's not something which we're, um, taking credit for, but it's, it's something which we have control over. It's, it's property we own. It's in Plymouth Township. And, uh, much like the last application, we did, uh, propose as some of the amenities, doing something there that the, that the borough might consider, um, favorably. Uh, we can either leave it as a, uh, a natural area that, um, is deed restricted forever, uh, or we can improve upon it, uh, anyway, which the, uh, Borough Council would, uh, would like, provided we can work with Plymouth Township to get their, uh, approval on that. But at the end of the day, uh, it's not, we're not counting that for, for anything, uh, other than letting you know that it's there. Uh, we can do something with it if you'd like. It's a big pocket of open space. It's, uh, it's eight thousand, uh, well, it's fifty-two thousand square feet, but it's, uh, so it's, it's a couple acres of ground, and it's relatively flat in some spots where you could do something if you'd like. So we can go into a later plan on that, and then I'll just tell you the other two or three we have. On this plan, you'll see, um, uh, Trailhead East, there's another little pocket of open space there that, uh, we have a, a better plan, which we can show you what that, um, could be developed for. Um, we, we also have what we call, okay, we, we go, this is Trailhead East. Basically, you see the bridge, um, your bridge there.
We're looking at Exhibits, is that A twenty-one?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, so Trailhead East would be, it's a, it's a small, you know, uh, five thousand square foot area. Uh, with table, we can set tables, we can have tables set up there, benches, water fountains, uh, some area, some, some amenities for, uh, the residents who, who want to enter the trail. Um, we could do something there that's pretty, pretty familiar with what you're seeing in the photographs. We also set aside a, uh, a, a parking, uh, area for a food truck or two. So to the extent, uh, the borough thinks it's, uh, it's, it would be helpful and, 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 um, something that they'd like, we could, we could set up a situation where you could, uh, it, it could service the trail users with a little, uh, uh, food truck and a little area where you can sit and, and rest and maybe get some refreshments as you, before you walk or when you finish your walk, uh, on the trail. So that's one little pocket area that we thought we could, we could, we could do something special, uh, on this side of town that, that might be, uh, uh, helpful for the trailhead. Uh, the next location, uh, to the next exhibit, if you could, Brittany. So I could say twenty-two, is it?
Yeah, it'd be A twenty-two, I think, yeah.
Yeah, um, this is, this is Trailhead Park. Um, uh, uh, this is the piece in Plymouth Township. Again, it's just an open pocket of land. We could, we could do anything, uh, that the borough thinks might be appropriate if they think it's appropriate at all. Um, again, we could also leave it in its natural setting and, and just preserve it forever. Um, but if there's some, something that you thought was worthwhile there, we, we would certainly entertain anything. To go to the next, um, exhibit, Brittany, A twenty-three, I think it is. Um, this shows you two other po- uh, pockets, parks that we have. Um, one we're calling, um, Cross Country Trail. It's, it's the smaller one at the top. It's about, I think, six thousand square feet. Um, it's the area behind the, the, uh, the grand. It's the area where the old comfort station was once proposed. Again, we could do some benches there, we could do some water fountains, we could do whatever. And, and we can talk about this tonight or during land development, uh, you know, if you, depending on what the borough wants to do. And, and the larger of the, of the parks would be, we called, uh, uh, the Trailside Park, and it's, uh, that's about like seventeen thousand square feet. Um, again, fountains, benches, um, whatever, whatever the borough thought would be appropriate, but we would put, uh, significant, uh, money into, um, making those areas something that, uh, would assist and make the, uh, your, your ride along the trail more pleasant. Um, again, we, we can brainstorm, and we drew some brainstorming ideas and photographs from the board here to, to kind of show you what we were thinking, but, um, uh, you know, again, there's, we've gone from, uh, dog parks to comfort stations to, uh, financial contributions for, uh, other areas along the trail that the, that the borough might think would be more appropriate. Uh, all those are, are something that, uh, we're, we're, uh, absolutely willing to consider and, and, and contribute to i- in accordance with our prior approvals, which, uh, I think amounted to three hundred and six thousand dollars of, of, of financial contributions towards, uh, improvements to these areas.
And since, excuse me, since these park areas that you've spoken about, and I'll speak of them collectively, are being offered for use by borough residents, we are asking that they be part of the consideration of the, of the height bonuses being sought by the applicant, um, through these proceedings, correct?
Yes, it's, I mean, it's, it's required of us to, to do something along these lines. Um, and, um, it's, it's, uh, exactly what we're proposing. Again, it's, it's very, very similar to what we did before, and, uh, it's our hope that, um, these areas could be set aside, uh, we can fund improvements for them, and it would be used and o- open to the public for, um, benefit of the borough residents and any trail users who, uh, who care to partake.
Okay, no further questions for Mr. Dwyer, and I'm not going to recall him, so if council had questions, I guess now's the time.
Members of council, any questions for Mr. Dwyer?
Tina, so glad to hear your question. Go ahead, Tina. Uh, so these areas that you're proposing, would, um, maintenance and care ongoing be a borough responsibility? Or would the project do the maintenance and care of the?
If, if it's something along the lines of what we're showing in these photographs, uh, the, the applicant would certainly take, take maintenance of it. If it's something more elaborate, we'd have to consider, uh, whether or not we could do that, um, you know, with insurance and things like that. But certainly what we're proposing here, uh, we would maintain and, uh, and build.
Thank you. So I, I do have one question. I, and all of your ideas look, look wonderful. Um, and I know that you mentioned that the, the dog park was one of the things that, um, was a suggestion. I, I know for myself, the dog park is a necessity. When you have that many new residents coming in to a certain area, um, that live in places where there is no yard, they need to have a place for their dogs, and unless your, um, facility is, is not going to be pet-friendly.
Understand, and that's, that's fine. I, again, we're, uh, we're open for any suggestions, and, and, uh, we certainly would, would, uh, uh, entertain and, and, and install something like that, if that's something that the, the Borough Council opts to, uh, uh, have us do. And, and again, it's, you know, there's no, uh, need for any decisions on, on that part of it. We have a long process ahead of us.
Correct.
So it's something that the board can consider, borough can consider, um, over the next, uh, six months or so.
Okay.
For the court reporter, I'm sure you recognize that, that was Colleen Leonard speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Hi, yes, this is Jane.
Sorry, Mike.
No problem, at all.
I also have a question. Um, will your apartments be dog-friendly? Is that part of your marketing, um, plan?
Yes, yeah, some, some units will be dog-friendly. It won't be widespread dog-friendly, but there will be some units set aside for, to be dog-friendly, absolutely.
Okay, then I would agree with Council President Leonard that I think the dog park is really high on our priority then, because we have seen past experience that apartment dwellers do love their pets, and they need somewhere to walk them. So I would urge you to look at that strongly and include that in your plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Hi, Bob, this is-
Anyone else? Go ahead, Karen.
Um, so I know that this will be for future conversations when we're, we're going through the land development process, but there are quite a few things and, and ideas. I appreciate what you're, you're presenting tonight, and there are others that, um, I think would be, um, just where we can get your assistance and partnership in, in some initiatives in our, uh, the Haynes and Salvati Park. And I'm not sure, um, I know you mentioned suggestions sounding like maybe we're, we're open to looking at some other things. Um, the trail, um, the Cross County Trail, um, that's an area that, um, a- and, and again, this would be a conversation for, for the land development process time, but it's an area that could really benefit from some cleanup and really just aesthetically make improvements down there. So, uh, I, I think that would be, um, another, um, area of what, what we should do and consider doing down there. And an- another thing, because we don't really have this anywhere in the borough, is maybe even tennis courts, just as a possible initiative over at the Haynes and Salvati area.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Karen.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I also think, and, and this is not part of that, you know, for that discussion either, but the twenty additional spots, what we talked about for trail users, that maybe that's something that could be, um, permit for the residents down there.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's something which, uh, I mean, we, we, we do intend to, uh, with, with the borough's cooperation, um, you know, look to take care of the residents there. I mean, there, there's a need for parking down there, and, and, uh, we, we could, we certainly will be setting aside all those spaces for the, for the residents, but any space that opens up would be, could be used for a trail user. And I, I think it would be great, uh, you know, during the land development application to, to set aside, uh, uh, any way you guys typically deal with, with, with parking permits, so that nobody, uh, puts, parks their boat there for six months and leaves. You know, it's, it's, uh, it would be an active park and, uh, an active need, and the residents there need it. would be an active park and, an active need and the residents there need it more so than anyone. So, so yeah, absolutely, Karen, that would be the case.
Okay, good, thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Bob, this is Yuni Varonson. The, the River Trail is definitely one of our big amenities in town. It's actually where I met my wife a few years ago. So, you know, I, I just want to offer, as you can see, our, our council members have a lot of great ideas. I certainly offer myself as a, as a regular user, you know, as, as we brainstorm over the next few months and, you know, you know, we're happy to be a part of that process. But, you know, the River Trail is, is one of the uniquely, you know, positive, uplifting, especially in these times, amenities that we have in the borough. So, you know, anything we can do to make that experience along the River Trail a positive one for residents, we want to be a part of.
Anyone else on council? Any questions? Okay, Mike, I think everyone on council is good.
Very good, President Leonard. Mr. Colak Greco, would you like to continue?
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick Stewart, please.
Here, Lou.
Can we punch up Exhibit A ten? Which is the illustrative plan? There we go. Patrick, could you please identify yourself for the record?
Sure, my name is Patrick J. Stewart. I'm the owner and principal of Stewart and Associates Landscape Architects and Planners LLC in King of Prussia, Pennsylvania.
You're the landscape architect that, that Carson Street is using for this project, correct?
Yes, I am.
I, I briefly, I didn't want to spend a lot of time or, or take a lot of testimony from you, but I thought it was important for council to see the special attention that's been given vis a vis landscaping to buffer adjacent areas, residential areas. And I'm, I'd like you to speak to that now if you could. You can Exhibit A ten.
Sure, A ten is really an illustrative plan that we prepared that reflects the borough required landscaping that's going to be provided throughout the site as we move through land development. We are required to put street trees out along West Elm Street. We're required to put parking lot trees within the parking lots, a tree for every ten spaces. There's perimeter buffers around the parking lots, which we have to meet and we have met on this plan. There's residential buffers where parking lots, but residential, which you'll see to the west there, to the left side of the sheet. There's also a number of foundation plantings that have to be put around the building and the parking garage. And there's also trail landscaping that we will be providing along the trail as well, which you can kind of see in certain areas where adequate room to provide. So all in all, there's a significant amount of landscaping that's required by the ordinances. And I think we're going to probably end up going above and beyond that by the time we're done with landscaping around the buildings and the tenant amenity spaces on the project.
And Exhibit A ten, at least as pertains to quantity of landscaping, shows compliance or depicts compliance with the zoning ordinance requirements of the township or of the borough, correct?
That's correct, Lou.
Okay. Is there any, are there any remarkable natural features on this property? We spoke about the flood plain, but if there are, how are they being preserved?
There's some sloped areas leading down to the Plymouth Creek that's adjacent to the parking structure. They are being preserved, we're not going into that area and disturbing anything within there. But, you know, the majority of the site is, you know, it's an old industrial site that was clear cut and developed as an industrial property many, many years ago. Over the years, scrub brush and invasive species have moved in. Some of that stuff was cleared out when the office building construction started and then halted. But it's, 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 it's basically covered by scrub brush and invasive species at this point.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. Stewart.
Any questions from Borough Council for Mr. Stewart?
I do not, thank you.
I don't believe there are any, Mike.
Very good. Lou, please continue.
Thank you. My final witness, my final witness is Chris Williams.
I'm here, Lou.
I'm, I'm well. Could you identify your, yourself and your place of employment for the record, please?
Certainly. Christopher Williams, address is eight thirty-five Springdale Drive, Exton, Pennsylvania. I'm a principal with McMahon Associates and I also serve as a project manager for transportation studies and transportation projects.
And, Mike, I believe Chris has been accepted by council in the past as an expert in traffic engineering and I would offer him in that capacity, I would ask that he be recognized as an expert in that capacity here this evening.
Members of council, I'm familiar with Mr. Williams and with McMahon. I'd recommend that you accept him as an expert in traffic engineering this evening. And again, Colleen, we just need some acknowledgement from you.
Yes, I will accept him, thank you very much.
Very good, Lou, please continue.
Chris, you've testified many, many times on this property, probably as much as Bob has. So you're very familiar with the property, the location, and you've done a number of other projects in the borough as well, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And you're familiar with the zoning ordinance requirements, specifically Section twenty-seven dash eight-two-four, requiring a traffic impact study be submitted with the conditional use application, correct?
Yes, I am, yes.
And you did, you did prepare that traffic impact study and we marked that as Exhibit A twenty-four.
That is correct.
All right. Can you, and, and you've updated that with a supplement dated October thirty, twenty twenty, which is also part of Exhibit A twenty-four. That's really all we're, we're going to be speaking to tonight. But can you describe briefly for the borough, the findings of your traffic impact study? And maybe here and, here and there, do a comparison between what's now being proposed and the traffic impact that it may have, as opposed to what is presently approved on the property with the office building and the traffic impact that it would have?
Certainly. So as, as was mentioned, with the previously proposed office development, a, a traffic study had been prepared for the site. Ultimately, that study was reviewed and approved by the borough and by PennDOT. Now, as part of this newly proposed apartment plan, our office did prepare a traffic study supplement dated October thirtieth, which you see before you. If I, if I were to cut right to the chase, referring to Table three on page three of this document. If you go a little further down to Table three, there you go. Excellent, thank you. So the first, the first row of numbers in Table three is the new traffic that would be generated by the previously approved four hundred thousand square feet of office. The second row of numbers is the new traffic generated by the now proposed apartment plan. And then the bottom row shows the difference in new traffic generated by the site as a comparison between the two uses. And as you can see, in that bottom row, with the apartment plan, the site generates significantly less traffic than the traffic that would have been generated by the previously approved office. This equates to fifty-three percent less traffic over the course of a full day and between sixty-five and seventy-one percent less traffic during the weekday commuter peak hours. So with less traffic generated by the site as an apartment development, we conclude logically that with the site developed now as an apartment use, it will result in comparatively better traffic operations in the area. That's sort of a brief summary as to the conclusions that we're able to pull from this, this study.
Now, even though the office project that we're referring to, the, the approved office project was never built, the access points to this site were permitted by PennDOT, is that not correct?
Yes, they are, they have been approved and permitted by PennDOT.
And this application, if approved by council, will require no new PennDOT approval because you're utilizing, we are utilizing the same points of access and egress, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
There, back when the office building was approved, there was an arrangement made and with the borough, with PennDOT, about what improvements would be done by Equus at that time. And of course, that's water over the dam now because that building was never built. But it's my understanding that the applicant is willing to abide by representations made back in twenty eighteen. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, certainly. So as part of the office plan, there was a proposal for traffic improvements consisting of physical improvements at the intersection of Fayette Street and Elm Street to provide double left turn lanes on northbound Fayette Street for traffic coming over the bridge and then turning left onto westbound, onto westbound Elm Street, as well as traffic signal timing and phasing modifications at that intersection. You know, those improvements would not be needed now due to this apartment development since it generates so much less traffic. However, those, those improvements certainly would be recommended anyway to help improve traffic flow and increase capacity at the intersection. So, you know, certainly we would still recommend those improvements. If I can maybe skip ahead, Lou, to where you were going to go, those improvements have actually been completed. Our team completed the design for those improvements and those designs were handed over to Keystone so that those improvements could be constructed in advance of their development located at that intersection. Also, I'll mention that with the previous office plan for this site, the applicant had offered a traffic contribution of five hundred thousand dollars to be used to help the borough and to help PennDOT for traffic improvements in the area. Now with the proposed apartment plan, even though it does generate significantly less traffic, it's my understanding this applicant proposes to honor that offer for a traffic improvements contribution, less the money that was spent to date for the Fayette Street, Elm Street intersection improvement design, which ultimately, ultimately led to the completion of those improvements by Keystone.
So let me restate that. In a, in a purely academic scenario, your report concludes that there are no additional traffic improvements necessary to facilitate safe and efficient access and egress to the subject development, correct?
That is correct.
However, the applicant is willing to donate funds, an amount to be determined with the borough staff and the solicitor, minus the design cost that it already spent to facilitate the improvements that Keystone developed, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. In your professional opinion, will the access as designed and as approved by PennDOT be detrimental in any way, shape or form to public safety, health and welfare?
No, not at all. From a traffic perspective, the development and the accesses as designed will, will not be detrimental, will not be contrary to the public health, safety and welfare of the community.
I have no further questions for Mr. Williams.
Members of council, any questions for Mr. Williams?
Doesn't seem like council has any questions for Mr. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, Mike, I can, no additional witnesses, that concludes our, our case.
At this time, Lou, would you like to offer A one through A twenty-four into the record?
I would, thank you.
Members of council, A one through A twenty-four are all appropriate exhibits and my recommendation is that they be accepted as part of the record in this conditional use hearing. Colleen, just need an affirmation from you.
Yes, that, that, I will affirm that, that they should be added in, thank you.
Okay, with that, again, we have no additional parties to this matter. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public statement before Lou wraps up with a, a brief conclusion?
This is Scott Langstein.
If you can identify yourself and your address.
Yes, this is Scott Langstein, two hundred West Elm Street.
Go ahead, Scott.
To just, I guess really more to council, just when consideration is taken into, or sorry, discussed about the Cross County Park, that small area that's behind the Grand at River View, that, that we be involved in the conversation because that area right now is being used by our residents for walking their dogs. And we do maintain that property, we do lawn maintenance of that area. So I would just like to request that we be involved in those conversations or at least we be taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Langstein.
Thank you.
Hi, Scott, this is Karen. I, I would be happy to have conversations with you about that.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any additional comment from members of the public this evening? Let the record reflect that there are no additional comments from the public. Lou, if you could, please give us a brief wrap up. I will note that council is at this point very familiar with the requirements for conditional use, but please feel free.
Well, I'm not going to belabor the point then. Council probably doesn't want to hear, doesn't want to hear anymore from me anyway, so I'll, I'll rest my case and hopefully the fourth time's a charm on this property.
Very good. Members of council, as is your practice, you have accepted all evidence into the record this evening. At this point, the record in this matter is closed. As you do with all votes, the vote on this matter will take place at your January twentieth meeting. For purposes of the public and for the record, this matter will be continued to Borough Council's January twentieth, twenty twenty meeting at seven o'clock PM. That meeting will similarly occur via remote means. The information relating to the remote meeting will be provided at www.konshahockenpa.gov. Because this matter has been continued on the record, it will not be read advertised and it is council's expectation that at that time, again, the record is closed. So the purposes of an additional meeting and hearing will be for a vote. Thank you very much to Lou and Bob and the team for participating this evening.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I need you to stick.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the public hearing on the residential overlay district ordinance amendment. Again, Mr. Peters, if you would like to open that hearing?
Thank you, President Leonard. Ed, if we could go on the record at this time, please. This is the scheduled date and time for the hearing on an ordinance proposing to amend the borough zoning ordinance to repeal Part nineteen B, the residential overlay district in its entirety. Council has discussed this matter over the course of several meetings. It spawned from your conversations and your analysis of the borough zoning ordinance generally. As you know, we're going through the entire ordinance, identifying areas that require amendment or reevaluation. That's also in connection with your comprehensive plan, which was adopted a couple of years ago in two thousand and eighteen. This ordinance in particular, that's before you this evening, again, would repeal Part nineteen B, the residential overlay district in its entirety. We'll talk briefly about what that overlay district did, but first, just some preliminary items. The ordinance was advertised as required by the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code on December one, twenty twenty, and December eight, twenty twenty, in the Times Herald, in Times Herald Digital. For purposes of this hearing, the four borough exhibits are Exhibit B one, the ordinance under consideration, Exhibit B two, the proof of publication, Exhibit B three, the report of the Konshahockenborough Planning Commission recommending adoption, and Exhibit B four, the report of the Montgomery County Planning Commission recommending adoption. The ordinance that's before you, council, is very straightforward. The residential overlay district permitted certain types of multifamily housing in the limited industrial district, and that was subject to specific conditions as set forth in the, the ordinance. You recently held a hearing on five forty-one East Hector under this section of the ordinance, so it is, it should be fresh in your mind. Council over the last few months has had several conversations and those revolved around three primary issues. conversations, and those revolved around three primary issues. First, the purpose of the residential overlay district still continues to serve that purpose in present day Konshahocken, the emergency management demands of the borough, and analyzing this ordinance from a planning perspective. So to go back to 2010, when the ordinance was adopted, obviously the borough was a much different place than it is today. That ordinance was designed to encourage adaptive reuse and redevelopment of properties within the borough's limited industrial district. And luckily for the borough, that redevelopment has occurred. Again, you just had a conditional use hearing under this exact overlay district for the project on East Hector Street. From an emergency management perspective, again, over the course of the last several years, you working with your emergency management coordinator, have reviewed the emergency management demands within the borough. Those conversations have included the fact that at the lower end of the borough, there are approximately 1,200 multifamily units that are under or soon to be under construction. You just heard a conditional use hearing for several hundred more multifamily units within that area of the borough. Those units will increase the percentage population from 26%, that was about 2,100 residents, to around 35%, which is around 3,300 residents. There are specific emergency management concerns that result from that, and there's no one better to explain that to you than your emergency management coordinator. So at this point, I'd ask Ray to walk through briefly some of his emergency management concerns, and then we'll talk about, from a planning perspective, what those concerns actually mean. So Ray, please.
So as our emergency management team met after a few recent incidents, one of the incidents was the, the last tropical storm that we had, went through the borough Konshahocken, where we had flooding in the lower end of town, along Washington Street, and flooding on Caldwell Lane. After we, after that flooding occurred, we had an after action conversation meeting with the Volunteer Fire Department, Police Department, members of the emergency management team, and a big discussion occurred about the situation on Caldwell Lane and the area around Caldwell Lane. When we have a flood situation along the river, generally that coincides with the same type of flooding on Caldwell Lane. With that type of flooding, we have to maneuver resources throughout the borough of Konshahocken from one location to another. With what's happened in the Volunteer Fire Department, which has been substantially, we have substantially less volunteers now, every municipality does than in the past, we noticed that we were running into a situation where spreading out the resources of the borough, police, fire, and EMS was becoming problematic. It was brought to the attention to, to the, the emergency management team by the, the fire chief and the deputy fire chief, that Caldwell Lane in particular caused a issue with the current development that is in the middle of Caldwell Lane. The water level during that tropical storm there reached about three feet in the roadway. That, that forced the residents to shelter in place, and that brought attention to that entire area at that point. The water levels for that particular incident didn't, didn't decrease down to manageable levels for about four to six hours. Luckily, power was not an issue in that area, but if it was, it would have caused another issue for us. So with our resources being what they are, this, the one square mile town in which we are spreading these resources around Caldwell Lane and the area around Caldwell Lane, became a focus of why do we, why are we currently allowing residencials to be built there? And that basically, that focus on Caldwell Lane then was transferred to Borough Administration, the Borough Manager, and Mr. Peters are legal. And we discussed the overlay, the residential overlay in that area, and whether that is a necessity anymore, and whether that is actually, that whether that has become a safety issue for the entire municipality. And I think our agreement as emergency management team is that it is, that any more building, residential building along there would hinder the resources that we, the limited resources that the borough already has, and prevent us from providing a safe situation, especially with evacuations, or a safe situations for our first responders to, to have to deal with in the future. So that was brought to the attention of the Borough Manager and Mr. Peters, and that is still the concern, the number one concern for that area.
Thank you very much, Ray. With that, council, as we do with, with everything, it was brought to council, obviously, for a discussion. We began reviewing it from a planning perspective. So your planning considered this ordinance as.
Door, please.
Oh, I'm sorry? Did anyone else hear?
I didn't hear.
My apologies.
Go ahead, Mike.
Very good. We began analyzing it from a planning perspective, and made the determination that based on the existing proposed and/or under construction multifamily residential use, uses within the borough, the concept of a residential overlay for the limited industrial district no longer made good planning sense from the perspective of the borough. And that is a position agreed to by, again, the Borough Planning Commission and the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Since 2010, the borough has drastically changed. Your last comprehensive plan contemplates these areas, including the area around Caldwell Lane remaining industrial. So with that, what we've done is come up with, we think, an appropriate way to address it from a planning perspective, which is to dispense with and repeal the residential overlay district. Those areas of the borough, obviously the limited industrial areas, they're still developable under the limited industrial district. This was just an overlay that was put in place in 2010 to encourage redevelopment. The focus of the borough from a planning perspective and emergency management perspective has changed. So this has been vetted for several months now, and at this time, I'll ask if there are any questions from Borough Council, although I do acknowledge that we have discussed this many times. But anything from Borough Council?
Mr. Peters, I think council is, is good.
Very good. Any, any questions or comments from the public at this time?
Yes, good evening.
Could you identify yourself, please, and state your address?
I will. Mr. Peters, good evening. My name is Rob Lewis. I am counsel for Dryden Court Development, who is the owner of the property at 450 Caldwell Lane. I won't belabor our points, but I do wish to comment on behalf of my client, and indeed lodge an objection to the proposed ordinance this evening. It's our opinion that, that what the borough is considering is a mistake and should be tabled for reconsideration. We believe that because there are properties that have, as you've even discussed this evening, been developed in accordance with this overlay, and, and there are properties currently seeking approvals in accordance with this overlay, that the wholesale repeal would essentially create zoning limbo and somewhat of zoning chaos. Those properties would immediately be rendered lawfully non-conforming, which is a situation that is difficult for any of the, the residents to address, or any future development to address. Understand that the borough may have certain concerns about individual properties, and whether or not those properties are, are appropriate for residential development. I think that can be addressed, but it can be addressed in a more appropriate manner. The wholesale repeal here, really in our opinion, is, is using a sledgehammer to do what you need to do with a scalpel. And on that basis, we, we don't believe that this is the appropriate way to address this, to, to simply repeal the entirety of this ordinance, and would like to make, have that made part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. So noted. Any other members of the public that wish to make a comment at this time? With that, President Leonard, as with the conditional use hearing, at this time, the record in this matter will be closed. Council will take a vote on this matter. Am I correct on this, that we're voting on this in, at the voting meeting as well?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Council will vote on this matter at their voting meeting on January 20th, 2020. For purposes of the record, the hearing is closed, but the matter will be continued at Borough Council's January 20th, 2020 meeting for a vote. That meeting will occur via remote means, and the method for the public to participate will be provided in the borough's website at www.konshahockenpa.gov. With that, the hearing is closed, and I think we can let Ed go. Thank you very much, Ed, for everything this evening.
Mike, do you mean 2021?
Yeah, I do. I mean 2021. Thank you very much. Can you fix that for me? I'm sorry.
We'll get that by March, Mike.
I know. Thank you so much, Anita. That actually would have created a very annoying problem for me. So thank you very much. Thanks a lot, Ed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, so we're closed on that item. The next item on the agenda is Seven Tower Bridge zoning hearing board application. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. So just a brief introduction to this. As you're aware, the applicant Seven Tower Bridge was here last month, seeking zoning relief for building mountain signage. At that time, they'd indicated that they would be coming back in with other signage related to the Seven Tower Bridge development. That signage would be a monument sign located at the driveway entrance from Washington Street. The actual sign would be located on the Six Tower Bridge property, and would also be counted as a fourth sign on the property. Therefore, they need the zoning relief from zoning hearing board. With that, I can just turn it over to Ross Weiss to walk through the application.
Good evening, Mr. Weiss.
Good evening, everybody. Want to wish you all a happy and healthy New Year. And, and we are back. We're, our hearing before the zoning hearing board is next Monday night, the 11th. What you have projected in front of you is our first exhibit. It's the aerial that I showed to you in December when we were before you for the Hamilton Lane three wall signs. And at the, towards the top of the yellow driveway easement through the Six Tower Bridge property is the intersection of the driveway with Washington Street. At the bottom of the yellow is the Seven Tower Bridge building. I'm sure you've all noticed and are watching, sort of like an erector set, as the garage levels are put in place with the big crane. It's interesting, at least for me, to watch the construction. At the bottom of the exhibit of the aerial is the school. To the left is the Fayette Street Bridge, surrounding the Seven Tower Bridge building or all of the other buildings. To the left is Eight Tower Bridge, and right above eight, right to the right of Eight Tower Bridge, immediately to the left of the yellow driveway easement is the Eight Tower Bridge parking garage. And to the immediate right of the yellow driveway easement is the Six Tower Bridge building, through whose property the driveway easement goes. And we've mentioned this before, and obviously, it's the same facts. The Seven Tower Bridge property is landlocked. And because of that, the signage, the signage is critical. Fortunately, the zoning hearing board recognized that in December in granting the three Hamilton Lane signs. The monument sign that we are requesting, could I please have the next exhibit, which is the plan for the signage? Thank you. This is a monument sign that will be at that intersection of the driveway easement and Washington Street. And the monument sign will be a flat sign, two-sided, and it's perpendicular to Washington Street. In the upper left-hand corner, you'll see the Six Tower Bridge sign that is at the other driveway. That's right below the hotel. And to the bottom right, I believe, if you could scroll down just a bit. Okay, could you scroll up? Right, right above the enter Seven Tower Bridge, Hamilton Lane sign, you can see the plan, the plan of the sign area. And that sign area was unique in that there's Pico utilities and a tree. And in order to get the sign at an appropriate size, and not to create a problem with the site distance triangle exiting the driveway, that dictated the location of the sign and the size. The zoning relief that we are requesting is, the sign is seven by seven or 49 square feet, and the ordinance only permits a 36 square foot sign. The ordinance only permits one sign, and we already have three, and this would be the fourth sign for the Seven Tower Bridge property, albeit this sign is on Six Tower Bridge's property, but for Seven Tower Bridge. Six Tower Bridge is a co-applicant. Our exhibit to the zoning hearing board will include a lever, letter from Six Tower Bridge, authorizing the filing of the application and approving of the sign. In addition, since the sign is not on Seven Tower Bridge's property, the zoning code characterizes it as an off-premise or a billboard sign. So we need zoning relief for that. The zoning officer, Eric's, letter pointed out that the sign has to be located in such a way not to violate the site distance triangle, and Jeff Carson, our sign expert, will testify to that effect next Monday night. And also, Eric pointed out that there is a tree that has to be removed, that'll actually be relocated, so that it'll still in effect be a street tree. I have Ellen Pulver-Flat and Elizabeth Castleman with us tonight, along with Jeff Carson, and we also have Kevin Lucy, who you might remember, he spoke to you at the December meeting when we talked about the Hamilton Lane signs. He's the chief operating officer for Hamilton Lane. I don't intend to ask them to say anything to you tonight, but they're here in case you have any questions of them. And that would complete our presentation, and we look forward to appearing before the zoning hearing board on Monday night.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Does anyone on council have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Anita Barton. Is there the possibility of that sign blocking the view for those driving, and making a, I guess, a right-hand turn there?
No. That's the question that Eric raises about the site triangle. And Jeff will testify that the sign will not interfere with the site distance to exit the driveway. That has been taken into consideration, and it was something that we were aware of. Obviously, it's a safety matter.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council have anything for Mr. Weiss this evening? Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, everyone. We're all going to drop off, and thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is 209 East 12th Avenue zoning hearing board application. Mr. Johnson?
Okay. So 209 East 12th Avenue, it's a single-family residential property. There was a fence that had been installed in the front yard of the property, and had been installed without the proper permitting. However, once the homeowner was contacted, he did in a common manner file all the required paperwork. However, the borough zoning code does not permit a fence between the front wall of a building and the street to which it faces. So therefore- between the front wall of a building and the street to which it faces. So, therefore, for that fence to remain as it is, it would require a variance that the applicant is currently seeking. I will note that the fence and the front yard is in line with the fence on the budding property on 225 East 12th Avenue. That fence runs along the frontage of 12th Avenue, and it was permitted on that fence because of the orientation of that house, and it was counted as a side yard fence. So, but this is in line and matches that fence. We have also received a letter from that property owner and another one in support of the application. And with that, I can turn it over to Steve Sokolowski to speak to the application.
Good evening, Steve.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
I don't really know what, a lot to say. The fence is mainly to keep my dog, as you can see in the picture there. And I think it actually makes the house look a little more finished. The property, I just bought it in, I think, July, and I've done a considerable amount of work to the outside and the inside. And I think that the fence just adds some aesthetic value to it as well as for my dog. And that's really the only reason why I need it, or did I want it? No other reason.
Steve, I know this is, obviously, is my neighborhood also. And I know in our neighborhood, there are a lot of front yard fences, fences, on your street, on my street. And I know that a lot of them were put in before the ordinance. And your neighbors, how do they, how do they feel about your fence?
My neighbor to the, if you're looking at my house, the left of me, the Gilchrist, they, he's in support of it. He has no issue with it. Neighbor across the street, no issue. So, I haven't met any kind of resistance from anyone.
Right.
As far as fencing goes.
Right. And the fence doesn't block where, if we had sidewalks, it would be, correct?
That's correct. That is correct. It's probably 20 feet, 25 feet from the road.
Right. And on your street in front, right there, don't people use that for parking?
They do.
Like their yards?
They have in the past, yes.
Okay. Okay, does anyone else on council have any questions for Steve? Okay. Well, Steve, thank you for coming in, and good luck with the zoning hearing board.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and welcome to the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Steve. The next item on the agenda is 236 West Sixth Avenue zoning hearing board application. Mr. Johnson?
Okay, so 236 West Sixth Avenue is a single-family residential property. To the rear of the property, currently, there is a garage and a two-car-wide carport that's accessed from the alley. The applicant is seeking to, they're going to demolish the shed, demolish the structure of the carport, and then expand that foundation of the carport in order to build a garage. A garage would have an area of 704 square feet. The, so he would need a variance for the size of the accessory structure for the garage. The existing property also has a building coverage that is modestly over the maximum permitted on a lot. This garage would add a little bit additional to that building coverage. Therefore, he would also need relief for building coverage. And with that, I can turn it over to Jared Frye, if you'd like to speak about his application.
Thank you, Eric. As Eric mentioned, my name is Jared Frye. I am the owner of 236 West Sixth. I purchased the property in 2015. The only exterior changes I made in that time is the addition of a impervious paver patio that you can see in the back, which did decrease some of my impervious coverage at the time. The request that I'm putting in, as Eric mentioned, is to take down the 484-square-foot of shed and carport and replace it with an enclosed garage. As, thank you, Brittany. As you can see in this picture, the garage is going to go in the same location as the carport with an expanded footprint that's going to include an additional 220 square feet. Part of the reason that I want to do this is because parking in the borough, and particularly in front of my house, has been harder to come by. I will say that it's been a little bit better since the pandemic, but prior to that, it was quite difficult to get parking. So, providing additional parking in the back would be ideal because, as is the two-car carport, as it's only 20-foot wide, can't really fit two cars because of the corbels that are in place there. But more importantly, I want an enclosed garage so that I can secure my wife's and my vehicles, as there has been some issues with crime in the area, particularly our neighbors across the street, as well as some vehicles that've been hit from passersby, whether it has anything to do with the two local bars or not, remains unseen. But the, Brittany, if you could go to the next slide. This is a proposed viewpoint of the back of the garage, just having a large two-car entrance, single garage door. And Brittany, if you could go to the next slide, that would just be the side of the building where the man door would be. Brittany, if you could go to the next slide. This is an aerial view of my property highlighted in red, and the tan buildings in the back would be what would be removed and replaced with the garage that is being proposed. As Eric mentioned, I would need a relief for the 350-square-foot, as well as the 35%. As you can tell, a lot of my neighbors, particularly the one highlighted in blue directly behind me, has a 600-square-foot garage. And an addition on the back, as well as a screened-in porch. They're, like I said, their garage is square, 600 square feet, and their yard frontage is 20-foot for a 2,800 lot. So, that that coverage is over 35% as well. My point being is that a lot of my neighbors have very similar setups. And Brittany, you go to the next slide. This is a view of my block, and as you can see, the majority of my neighbors do have garages, many of them quite large, very similar to what I'm proposing. The, and Brittany, if you go to the next slide, this is just an example of neighbors within a block that also have a very similar setup to what I am requesting, that have properties that are accessory structures over 350 square feet and building coverage over 35%. And the last slide shows the same thing, and I'm, I want to try and hurry up because I know we're long on time. But if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone on council have questions for Mr. Frye? No. Okay, thank you, Mr. Frye. It was a very nice presentation, and good luck with the zoning hearing board.
All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. And Eric and Brittany, I appreciate all your help guiding me through this.
Okay, and have a good evening.
You, too.
The next item on the agenda is discussion on SP4 district signage standards amendment. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, President Leonard. The document that was provided to you is an initial draft of a proposed amendment to the SP4 signage regulations. The SP4 district is, of course, the Sora Building in the Seoul, and again, our Source Bergen Building. The proposal, and it is entirely within your discretion whether or not this moves forward. The proposal is to change the sign regulations to address buildings that are higher than 180 feet in height. So, you have seen initial designs of signage for the Amerisource Bergen Building, and of course, the same would apply to other buildings of that height, for purposes of trying to get the appropriate size for that height of building. And the proposal would be, if a building is that large, and if the building is occupied, not occupied, I'm sorry, allocated, so through lease or otherwise, up to 95% to a single principal user, there would be some new regulations that apply. So, for any, for any building more than 100 feet in height, which was a separate, a separate piece of this ordinance, the old regulations still apply if there's not a single user of 95% or more of the building. If there is a single user for 95% or more of the building, the change proposed is for wall signs located more than 150 feet above average grade level to permit one wall sign of a maximum of 500 square feet in size. So, the old maximum was 150 feet to be located anywhere on the building. This is limited to areas at least 150 feet above average grade. They could be 500 square feet in height, but the letters could be no, no taller than 75 inches in height. So, the reason, obviously, that you would consider something like this is if you have a tenant in a building that not only occupies 95% of the building, but frankly, they have a long name. So, that is where you would run into a situation where to have a sign that's legible from the ground, you need a larger sign, but with a limit on on letter height. Aside from that one additional sign of 500 square feet, there would be additional signage permitted. Now, there, there are two options that are set forth in this draft. The first is that there's one additional sign of up to 150 square feet. That's the same as allowed under the prior regulations. There is a second regulation, if the applicant chooses, and it isn't either or, for two additional wall signs for a maximum of 150 square feet. So, you end up with the same footage and signage, but there may be one versus two signs. The additional regulations that apply, if the signage is facing a residential use, it may not be lit. It does not apply to parking garages, so you could not put a sign of this size on a parking garage. And there's also a stipulation in this ordinance that if the leasable space to the primary user falls below 95%. So, if the primary user leaves, there's a provision in this ordinance where the signage that's permitted would have to be removed. And it would be removed anyway, frankly, if the, if the entity's no longer there. But there is a caveat that they also couldn't replace that signage with signage for one of the other tenants, or even if the same tenant leases, let's say, 60% of the building, they would still have to remove the signage. We wanted to do that to make sure that we limited it as much as possible. So, this is not for a vote this evening. It still needs to be vetted by your planning commission and by the Montgomery County Planning Commission. The, the issue for tonight is, do you have any initial questions for me or for Steph or for Eric? You obviously can ask questions between now and the next meeting, but we're available now if you have anything you'd like to discuss.
Hi, Anita Barton. I do have one question. The Brixmore sign is lit and faces residence. Are we going to have a problem with them wanting to do the same?
Anita, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm following. You mean, try to do the same in terms of having
In terms of lighting it facing a residency. Do any of their signs face a residency?
No.
Like the apartments above, what is it, nudies? Are there apartments above nudies? I don't even remember.
No.
No, no. I mean, but that, that, that side, that side of the building, this ordinance could not be lit.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, the Brixmore sign facing the residence is lit?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure that, I don't think Brixmore is SP4, though. It's in a different zoning district. When, when SP4, council actually identified this as an issue at that point, which was good. So, even before this, SP4, from its outset, prevented lit signs facing residential districts. And that was, that was at council's request. Probably maybe because of Brixmore. I don't know why, but it's always been part of the, of the ordinance.
Okay.
Anything else actually from council, and you have lots of time?
Okay. Anyone else question for Mr. Peters? Thank you, Mr. Peters.
I'm accessible to you if anything comes up between now and January 20th. Thank you, President Leonard.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is manager matters. Ms. Checkow?
The first item is to reappoint a solicitor for the zoning hearing board. Rudolph Clark has expressed interest in continuing their solicitorship for the zoning hearing board. Their previous rate is at $150 per hour. That amount would stay the same. My recommendation is to appoint them for 2021 based on the pandemic and current and ongoing zoning applications. I would recommend that as we move through 2021, however, that we look through our services that require an RFP that we have not done in a certain amount of time, and prepare for that going into reorganization for 2022. Is there any questions?
No.
Then the motion would be to reappoint Rudolph Clark as the solicitor of the zoning hearing board at the submitted rate schedule.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, Anita.
Okay, so, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
The next item is to approve Resolution 2021-01, which extends the local disaster emergency until March 3, 2021.
I'll make that motion, Sokolowski.
I'll second it.
Is that Ike?
Yes.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Stephanie. Next item on the agenda is under legal matters. Consider authorizing the advertisement of the Sewer Authority RFB, Mr. Shear?
Yes, good, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you hear me fine? Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Good evening. Yes, this evening, we just wanted to briefly discuss the RFB. So, the boroughs obviously have been going through a process here for this exploration process. And you'll hear a little bit more from attorney Tom Wyatt next regarding some other issues. But the RFB is, is basically a logistical document that the team has put together. The, the, kind of, the industry has seen this many times for other transactions. So, it's been vetted very thoroughly here over the past couple of years. And it basically just sets forth the, the way that the bidders have to submit their proposal, assuming, you know, we do get the authorization to release the RFB here in a couple of weeks. Again, it kind of just lays out, number one, who is able to respond, and that's the pre-qualified bidders that were qualified, pre-qualified back last year. It basically refers to the asset purchase agreement that has kind of all the information related to the system in it. And then it just has various schedules in it that the bidders must fill out in order for it to be a compliant bid. And ultimately, the last schedules are the ones that reflect the purchase price that they're willing to offer. And kind of one, one point that's noteworthy is, there's basically two proposals that we would be seeking if you authorize this. And that would be, what's currently drafted in the asset purchase agreement assumes a three-year rate freeze, and that's what has been discussed. And like I said, that's what is currently And like I said, that's what is currently drafted in the agreement. We are also asking for an alternative bid that assumes sort of no official rate freeze, but if and when we get to that point, you'll see that it will, just based on the timing of when these companies or these entities may look to increase rates, there will still be a de facto rate increase. So we do this just to give our client the ability to see multiple options to ultimately make, make a decision if that's, again, the direction the board wants to go. So again, it's just basically a logistical document that the bidders, the industry has seen before. It has worked very well, kept the process on track. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Scott, I'm just going to jump in and just add, add a brief explanation of how we got here. So this process, again, has been ongoing for a little bit over a year at this point. It was put on hold for a short time period due to COVID. This is an exploratory process that council is going through. It's an important process. It is a important decision. I give council a lot of credit for doing their due diligence on behalf of the constituents by engaging in the exploratory process. And the fact of the matter is, is that this RFP, an ordinance that will, that Tom Wyatt will discuss next, is simply the next step in this process. No decisions regarding sale are being made at this point. The borough needs to understand what the value of the asset would be, and the council will consider that, complete that conversation in the next few months as we continue to go through the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Does anyone on council have any questions for Mr. Shear?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is discussion, discussion on an ordinance requiring the Borough of Conshohocken Authority to convey the sewer authority system to the Borough of Conshohocken. Mr. Wyatt?
Good evening, all. I'm Tom Wyatt from the Overmeyer Firm. I'm pleased to be here with you tonight. But the first item I wanted to summarize for you and respond to any questions, it relates to the ordinance that you just mentioned. It is, as, as Stephanie said, a part of the RFP process. If we get, if there's a bid that council wishes to accept, then the assets from the BCA will need to be conveyed back to the borough. And so that's what this ordinance does. It is the beginning of a very orderly and organized process to have BCA convey all of the real property, all of its permits, and have the borough assume or discharge the debt of the BCA and to assume the CBA and undertake the employment of the employees. And the anticipation, we anticipate that if there is a bid that's attractive to council, we would anticipate that the assets, once conveyed back to the borough, won't be with the borough for long, we would move toward closing with the successful bidder. So that's what this ordinance intends to do. And again, if it's, if it's passed on, on the 20th, it doesn't mean that you then are operating the BCA. It's the beginning of a due diligence process. It's a beginning of, of a transition process to convey those assets back to the borough.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wyatt?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to the final item is the discussion on a resolution setting the waterway system rates for customers outside the boundaries of the borough customers. Mr. Wyatt?
Yes, thank you very much. And so this, this resolution is a companion piece to the ordinance. And so if you decide to pass the ordinance, you would, I would suggest and recommend that you pass this resolution as well. And the issue at stake here is a municipal authority can charge rates anywhere in the Commonwealth and has no boundary and is not a subject to the jurisdiction and oversight of the Public Utility Commission. Now, a borough can set rates and own a sewer facility inside of its boundaries, and the PUC has no, no jurisdiction. However, at such, at such time as a borough owns or bills customers and owns sewer assets outside of its boundary, then it becomes subject to Public Utility Commission oversight unless you meet certain criteria. And so the criteria that's laid out in this resolution, for instance, that we will charge customers in West Conshohocken and Plymouth the same rates that we charge and on through the resolution, assures the PUC that we're going to treat extraterritorial customers of the borough the same as we treat customers of the borough. And under those circumstances, the PUC will not seek to regulate the rates of the borough. And that's what this intends to do.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Does anyone on council have a question regarding that?
So it's Tina. I just want to clarify. So the ordinance, if we voted in, we would want to also look at bringing in a resolution. But in the event that we get our asset assessed and the RFP comes in and we review everything, because that's really what this process is, is to look at what all of our assets are so that we can make some strategic decisions for our future. If we choose not to move forward, we would just repeal the ordinance and the resolution and leave everything status quo, correct?
That's correct.
So even though we vote on an ordinance and a resolution in the next voting meeting, that doesn't mean we are committing to selling the sewer authority. It means that we are setting ourselves up for the process of determining what strategically we're going to do for our future for the residents and funding.
That's, that's absolutely correct, councilwoman. There's no irreversible decisions that will take place at the time of passage of the ordinance or the resolution.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Okay, so Brittany, do we, do we have any public comments submitted?
No, we did not receive any written public comment.
Okay. And do we have anyone for public comment? Okay, can you state your name and address, please?
This is Scott Langstein again, 200 West Elm Street. Just had an additional comment regarding 400 West Elm Street, and this is, I think, more just for the future with planning commission and land development. I believe there's a paper street identified in that vicinity or that area, and I don't know if that's something that's going to be explored further in the future, because I think that paper street would connect to where the, hopefully, future SEPTA parking lot, or, sorry, parking garage will be constructed. And that would certainly alleviate, I think, some of the traffic concerns around Oak Street and West Elm, and also using the, I guess, the Grand as a cut-through. So again, I'm not sure where that is appropriate for further discussion, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. That's something that administration can look into.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Okay, Mayor Aronson?
Thank you, President Leonard.
You're welcome.
So, you know, one of the uplifting parts of this pandemic is how the, our administration has really encouraged and supported our businesses. I'm super happy to report that we had our fourth business opening since the pandemic hit. We all know Steph, who's owner of the Deli on Fourth, and she opened the Smoothie Shack on Monday, and it's wonderful, and I think it's a perfect fit for, for the borough. So, so good luck to Steph, and I encourage all of you to, to visit what she has set up. It's really nice. And then just piggybacking on everything that the borough has done for businesses, I want to continue to do my part. So my team is working with Guppies, and on the 30th, we're going to have a virtual quizzo, and we hope to continue this over the next few months with different businesses, just to get the word out that, that they're open and you can order food from them and help get them some attention. So this will be going off on the 30th, and all proceeds will, will benefit Guppies directly. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Mr. Stokely?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Ms. Barton?
No, I just want to say kudos to our administrative staff and all their hard work in putting all of this together regarding the sewer authority. I just, I'm very impressed with the numbers and, and what they have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Ms. Flanagan?
I agree with Anita. I feel that our behind-the-scenes administrative work is incredibly important to the successful functioning of our borough, and especially during COVID, how they've risen to the occasion. So just thanks so much to all of you.
Thank you, Jane. Mr. Tino?
I do not have anything this evening. Thank you.
Ike? Ike, are you there? Chief Metz, are you with us this evening?
I am, President Leonard. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you, Chief Metz. So on that note, I would, I would. Oh, Tina. Go ahead, Tina. I forgot somebody.
Yeah, that's okay. Just a reminder, as we're taking down our Christmas decorations and we have broken lights, we do have a recycling bin for broken lights out back behind the B field in the park, or, yeah, in the parking lot back there. Please feel free to put any of your recyclable broken lights into bins, and they will be picking them up, I think, on January 11th.
Okay. Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome.
And we'd just like to tell everyone to please stay safe and healthy, and we will see everyone in two weeks. And with that, I will say, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.